Call to order, the May 7th, special meeting of the North Andover Planning Board. We have, we all good in the back? Good? Yeah, alright. Seem good. Alright, we have two items on our agenda and we're gonna flip the order. So, we're gonna start with 1600 Osgood Street. Attorney John Smolak representing Hillwood Enterprises, discussion related to proposed develop, redevelopment plan. What we'll do tonight is, John, I think we have some new information that you're gonna share with us and present, so we'll look through that, ask questions about that. After that, if there's any comment or questions from members of the audience, we'll take those, and then we'll look into the proposed zoning articles to discuss those, okay? That's the plan for tonight, so Attorney Smolak.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman of the members of the board. John Smolak, Attorney for Hillwood Enterprises. Again, thank you for being here this evening on a special session of the Planning Board, and with us this evening are Gary Frederick, who's Senior Vice President and Market Lead for the Northeast for Hillwood, out of Hillwood's Harrisburg, Pennsylvania office. Also with us, again, is Nate Kerschner, Senior Project Manager for Langen Environmental and Engineering. Just picking up where we left off at our meeting last week, you did hear from Sean O'Brien of Hillwood, just to give you a brief introduction to the company itself, and then also, we introduced a lot of information about the site, in terms of its existing conditions, and the proposed development concept, and then, we also identified what we felt would be the terms of what would be necessary zoning changes and the application to those changes, based on that discussion. And, for this evening, we don't wanna take up a lot of the board's time, but what we'd like to do is, first of all, introduce you to Gary Frederick, from Hillwood Enterprises, to get a little more in-depth about the company itself, and site selection and the like, and then, since there were questions about some potential impacts, we wanted to give the board some feeling for big-picture terms, in terms of, you know, potential impacts related to certain matters, sewer and traffic and the like. And then, lastly, we'd be happy to revisit the proposed zoning amendments. We've made some tweaks based on input we received, and so we'd like to address those as well. So, with that said, I'll turn the discussion over to Gary.
Good evening. Gary Frederick, Hillwood Enterprises. I am responsible for the company's operations in the Northeast. Hillwood, as you may know, is privately-held real estate investment and development company, based in Dallas, Texas, privately-held by the Perro family. We have 30 years of experience in the business of industrial real estate. I've been there 20 of those years. We have, this is our second project in New England. We've completed a project somewhat similar to this one, in North Haven, Connecticut. So, this, this project, we are still bound by a non-disclosure agreement. We are hopeful of getting past that in the weeks to come, or being able to move closer to a disclosure of the company name, I'm just not allowed to say the word. But we have a large book of business with this company, and this site has surfaced as a result of site-selection process that focuses on some rather obvious factors, like, you know, its proximity to a major metropolitan area's population and consumer base. That's probably number one. The next one is, the ability to, to get satisfactory labor force to operate this facility. We're, I think we're talking about something on the order of 1,500 new jobs. And so, the, the, sort of this northern sector of, of 495 certainly fills that bill, and probably the next big one is logistics, the immediate access to Interstate 495 and I-93 and the other routes. Clearly fill the bill, and, and then, the ability to get in, into and out of the site without delay is important. Access to public utilities, very important. Receptive community with zoning that's, in this case, very close to what we need. We have a couple little tweaks to, to, to get it spot-on. So, that's, that's really the long and the short of how we, how we got here. We, we're optimistic that, that this is a great fit for the, for the company, as well as the community, and, as I mentioned, we've had, we've a long history of doing these things, and the vast majority of it is very good, we're proud of it all, and we, we look forward to working with you. I was before the Board of Selectmen, two different times, warm reception, as we set the special meeting for next month. So, we look forward to airing this thing out, answering questions, making sure that the community is comfortable with what it is that we propose to do. Is that, is that okay?
So, just moving along quickly, I know that there are a number of matters that the board will look at, in much more detail, at the site plan review stage, but we wanted to just touch upon a couple of items, just, just briefly, just to let you know, in terms of the potential impacts to certain, certain matters that are the obvious ones, and, and so I wanted to have Nate Kerschner perhaps run through those quickly, and I guess with reference to the next slide.
Sure. I guess for the record, Nate Kerschner, Senior Project Manager of Langen Engineering. As, as John had indicated, the, from last, last week's meeting, there was a lot of discussion about what more you could tell us. Obviously, we're, we're very early on in the, in the, in the getting into the weeds with stormwater design, landscaping design, and things of that nature, so we did just wanna touch upon a couple of the high-level bullets. The first two really are sewer usage, which I know we talked, John had talked briefly about last week, and then traffic. Again, I will, I will caveat the rest of the conversation by saying that everything is very preliminary. We're keeping numbers kinda loose until we get a little further along with the design, but this'll hopefully give the board some comfort with where we're headed, with respect to these items. I'm not actually gonna talk about these two, I have a separate slide for each of these items. With respect to landscape screening and buffering, obviously, the comprehensive site plan application will include a landscape plan. There's been significant discussion of sensitivities, particularly with respect to buffering, the solar, we're fully aware of that. Hillwood's on board, and with doing whatever, whatever is appropriate and necessary to provide that, the landscaping and screening. For the solar, then as well, you know, the landscape enhancements and buffering that's necessary for the rest of the development site. Lighting, nationally, the lighting program for, for this tenant, and for a development of this nature knows, recognizes, there are town bylaws that need to be complied with, you know, at a minimum on their own, they're dark sky compliant LED fixtures, you know, that will otherwise meet all requirements, you know, zero trespass, things of that nature, and will comply with the regulations of, of the town's bylaws. Stormwater management is, as proposed now, with three separate parcels, there'll be three stormwater permits that will be submitted as part of the application for this project. In addition, we are going in front of the Conservation Commission, so the stormwater management infrastructure will comply with MASTD handbook, as well as local bylaws, and obviously, there will be a peer review conducted, I'm sure, by this commission, if not, if, potentially this commission, as well as the Conservation Commission, but at minimum, I would assume there's at least one peer review. And it'll be a combination, obviously, there'll be significant BMPs, water quality improvements versus the current site, which was developed predating a lot of the current modern stormwater management practices. Parking and access, you know, we can get, we'll get into more detail with that. I think John did a very good job of kinda summarizing, there's four existing access locations to the overall property now. Those are to be maintained, we're not proposing any new, new access locations. And two, the two signals will remain, we're not proposing any new signals, and then parking will, this will evolve, but ultimately, the site plan that was previously provided, that I can flip to, if anybody wants, wants to talk about it, will, you know, be a pretty standard parking layout. There's parking segregated for the office building, and then as well, for the industrial building. Solar doesn't really need parking, with areas of vehicular access, and locations for maintenance trucks, and things of that nature, for the solar fields. Another question came up last week with respect to truck idling. The tenant has a policy that, flat-out, there is no, no idling of vehicles. In addition, obviously, they will comply with all state, federal, and local regulations with respect to emissions and truck idling, things of that nature. Finally, it would be architecture. Again, I'm an engineer, not an architect, but we do work nationally with the architect who's on this project, Hillwood does as well, and we're sensitive to the fact that there is a architectural review as a component to the application process, so we, we plan to address that as, as we move forward to the application. Just briefly, and I know we've mentioned these numbers, but just to, to put them on a slide, 'cause some people prefer the visual, really, we just, what we did was look at the former Lucent facility in its, in its heyday, and what the projected annual, or average daily traffic generated from that facility was, as well as the numbers provided, and this was provided by TEC's response to comments for, in 2006, you can see a little footnote where these numbers came from, and what was approved previously, the 40R master plan. And the Lucent had, we'll call it 20,000 total vehicles per day, the, sorry, annually, the 40R projected about a third increase to that number. And, again, preliminarily, what we're looking at, when comparing this development, both the office building, as well as the industrial building, it's about a 42% reduction versus the 20,000 number that Lucent previously generated, and about a 28% reduction over what was previously approved for the 40R, so.
40% reduction, or 40%? Oh, your slide says 40%.
I'm sorry, I've, so, you're looking at-
Just regular number, so we're talking 8,000 annual?
Last, last week, I'd say, it's still, you know, somewhere between eight and nine, again, preliminarily, but yeah, it's about, about a third of what's currently there.
What is the, do we know how many trips there are currently right now? So, I mean, this is good information to have, about what it used to be, but, to be honest, I'm more interested in-
Sure.
From today, going forward.
It's tough to, I mean, we have some raw data, we haven't, haven't compiled that data or analyzed it yet. The caveat to that data, as of today, is, there's a lot of vacancy in that building. So, it would be skewed if-
And I get that, and I would rather have skewed data with asterisks, and saying why this doesn't fully represent, rather than no data and explaining.
I mean, it probably is worth, certainly, by the time you do site plan review, we just go out for a day or two and do counts.
Correct, no, and we have, we've done, we actually did counts, we tried to do them before the school year ends. So, like I said, we do have that data, it's just not compiled in this chart.
You know, obviously, intuitively, you know, I remember 30 years ago, if you drove by there at 3:30 in the afternoon, you'd make a big mistake.
Sure.
And this is not gonna be anywhere close to that.
Correct.
So, at one level, that's a no-brainer, or at another level, I think you can, it's right, is just, let's have all the data, so that nobody can argue anything.
We'll, we'll make sure that, upon site plan application, we include that. Obviously, there'll be an asterisk or footnote or something.
Just, again, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a question that comes up at, at a special town meeting.
Sure.
It's gonna come up, so, the more information, 'cause I've also heard, I mean, I wasn't here 30 years ago, but anecdotally, when, you know, I heard, you know, traffic all the way backed up, all the way to, you know, Sutton Street, you know, at peak hours. And I know that this isn't gonna be like that, you're talking about 1,500 lawyers, you're talking about the trucks going the other way. Get it? So, I think all the more reason, just to give us even whatever numbers you have, about what's going on now, versus that, and to say, asterisk, 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 you know, this place isn't filled up, it could get filled up, it could be made into something else, this is gonna be not even close to that, but this is just what the numbers are.
Sure.
They want numbers.
Got it? We'll get them more numbers.
We like numbers, we like numbers.
And then, just briefly, obviously, it is a, you know, a distribution center, rough, rough numbers again, for, for truck traffic.
Right.
You know, the AM peak is gonna be less than 20, the PM peak's gonna be less than 20 trucks per hour, and trailer, you know, trailer trucks, per multiple conversations, you know, throughout, you know, without talking to various members of the municipality, it's gonna go left, and everything's gonna head, you know, travel to the Wardhill connector, and ultimately, the goal is to get on, you know, 495 as fast as possible.
I think it's worth, I just make, make a comment that, in industrial buildings, this one would have a lower truck count per square foot than just about any other variety of industrial buildings, because the exiting truck will be filled with little packages that might have one, or two, or three things in each package, so the little envelope, so it's, it, it's a, it's not a truck full of pallets, it's a truck full of little packages, so it takes a long time to fill one of those up. So, this is a low concentration of truck traffic for a, a big building.
And then, just briefly, I know we talked about sewage, sewage usage last week, just to, just to put some more bullets in front of everybody, I know the question was asked, what the current average, what the current daily average flow is. We were able to obtain that data, it's, the first number's, call it 16,000 gallons per day. The projected sewage demands for Lot B will be 70,000 gallons per day, and then at full occupancy, the office building, Lot A, would be between 100 and 125,000. And then, just as additional data points, as Gary said, it sounds like we like numbers, the approved design flow is 280,000 gallons per day, which we're, you know, we're less than by about a third, and then, what's, the permitted sewage allocation is about half a million gallons a day, so.
I don't know if it's a question for you guys, or for Gene, or anyone, really. So, if this increases the water usage by about 10 times, seems about what it would, does that affect our, I mean, that means there's a lot more water being used in North Andover, which, does that affect our GLSD rates, because now North Andover as a town is using more water, and so, does that mean, based on the percentages that we're then paying more, and if so, do we have to address that as some sort of mitigation? I know, I, I don't know the answer to that question, I just don't know.
Well, just to mention again, these are the flows of, of the existing facility, and projected flows of the future use.
Yeah.
All those flows currently go directly discharged to the GLSD, through the existing series of easements that run behind the Lucent building, and, and actually, the sewer line was constructed from Lucent to the existing sewer line that runs to, pass the airport to the GLSD, you know, back in, in 2000. And so, there's a sewer rate that's paid directly to the GLSD. If the public sewer option arises, which we hope it will, then what you'll have is a new public sewer along Osgood Street, running to, presumably to Sutton Street, for that length, in which case, those sewer flows, we think, you know, those sewer flows, we haven't had the full discussion with the town yet, but we expect those flows to run through what would be considered the town system, and therefore, for, you know, chargeable through the town rate system, so, which will be higher than what, what the rates are today. So, the idea is, is the hope to have a public sewer option up and running by the time this building operates, but as a, sort of as a option B, in the event that doesn't happen on time, we'll have this, the current option available to us.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that there's no, that doesn't have adverse impact on any fees related to the town. I don't know how the system exactly works with GLSD, if we pay, based on how much water from North Andover goes into, into it, which I think-
I mean, also, I don't know what, I imagine it's probably relatively minor increase in the overall water capacity, too, but-
Yeah, I-
I think that's more long-term town planning, but we ought to take that into account.
And we know this capacity.
Yeah, the capacity doesn't look like an issue.
Right. Hopefully, that clarifies a little bit of that, so.
Okay.
So, again, just a snapshot, very rough picture, very preliminary, but wanted to try to give you some parameters, in terms of what we see as potential impacts. If you can identify any other impacts that you're concerned with, and we will certainly would hear it through a, through a formal hearing process, but to the extent there's something else that you think we're missing, just let us know, and we'll try to capture that, and get answers to you.
It seems pretty good, now that we've, we've at least talked about traffic, and I think, with a little more, a little more data, I think we're pretty close to, I know, again, a rough idea of what we're talking about. We've kinda talked about light, talked about noise, no schoolchildren, so that's good. No, I think that's, you guys have quite other kinda things you want answered at the moment?
Comment? I appreciate you making note of the truck idling, and getting the information, and being responsive, that's great to see, that you're taking notes, thank you. I've been here for a long time.
So.
Speaking of a long time, how, how long will it take? What about? So, in terms of schedule, there's, there's, I'll just kind of walk you through it, if you just bear with me for a minute.
Great.
There's, there's a bunch of tenants in, in buildings that are gonna be torn down, and so those leases have to run their course. That happens towards the end of this year. And, some of them are being relocated to the, the building that is going to be retained by Ozzy Properties. Some of them are gonna have to go elsewhere, but, so, so that's one, that's the first big step. The, the next big step is to demolish the buildings that have gotta go, and prepare the site. So, that takes almost another year, and then, it takes about, about 15 months to build this thing, so I, I think, blah, 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 I think we're 2022, mid-2022 is, is opening day, and then, the, the point I was making is, we plan to be here for a long time. This building, you know, this is, I believe, it's either a 15- or 20-year lease, so they're gonna be here for a long time. That's what I meant, and, and the, the point that I was trying to make is, they, they wanna be part of the community, they wanna come in, and they want to be on good terms, obviously, with the kind of investment that they're making, so, we're, we're, we're here to address concerns and solve problems, and then try to deliver this thing on schedule and budget.
So, I have, I have a question. So, your company will lease, you'll, you'll build it, you'll lease this facility to-
The user.
The user, the end-user. In terms of facilities maintenance, is that, do, will you have staff on-site, or will that be built into your lease, where the, the tenant would be responsible for all?
It's a mixture, it's a mixture. We have some property management responsibilities, they have, it's split between the tenant and the landlord. It, they, we'll take care of things like snow removal, and landscaping, and roof maintenance, and they'll take care of things like HVAC maintenance, so it's, it's kinda-
But you'll, you'll have staff on-site?
Well, a lot of times, it's done by, it's done under contract, so we'll have a contractor who provides snow removal. So, we'll have, we'll be under contract with a local company that comes out and does their thing, same thing with landscaping, roof maintenance. I'd say, the majority of that type of thing is outsourced to local contractors to, to take care of it. So, actually, another plus that nobody's talked about, yeah, if you think about it. There is something on the order, no, you can't hold me to this number, but I'm gonna give you a number, but there's, the maintenance on this is a couple million bucks a year, something like that.
Yeah.
To change filters, cut the grass.
And, and those jobs are outside of the 1,500 jobs that are-
I think that's fair to say, that's, that's fair.
Okay. Again, I would, I think, in a minute, we'll jump into the zoning and talk about that. I know you guys are still talking about the non-disclosure of the name, and I would just reiterate that we have a special town meeting now, scheduled for six weeks from now. People who are going to go to that will want to know who they're voting for.
I understand.
Everything is, sounds really good so far, like Peter said, you guys are answering all our questions, you're providing us information, I think that'll be just a, that'll be a key piece of information. Just, I don't really think it matters too much who it is, just not knowing would be a bad thing. So, why don't we jump to the zoning changes? Made some amendments to what was presented last time.
Yeah, and the only thing I would say is that, you know, I think what we heard last time was, let's try to make sure that these amendments are narrowly tailored, number one, to make sure, to prevent any type of externalities, negative externalities, with respect to other sites, and I know that Gene had taken a look at inventory, all the other parcels, zoned I-2, and, and in terms, so what we've tried to do is, specifically, I think the, the major question was related to height and FAR, so what we've tried to do is, try to narrow the applicability of these provisions to very limited circumstances. So, I think there's this site, as well as maybe the airport, as the-
So, yeah, I mean, I really liked, I think it does two things, one is, I didn't like the term waiver, I like this approval by SP, and it has the same functional effect. And then, the other thing is, by putting the 100 acres in, what it does is, it, it avoids the unexpected consequences, unattended consequences, E.T., that you talked about last time, so I feel like this catches everything we wanna need, and the protection the town has, but it ends up being sort of fair, yeah.
And the only other adjustment was, sort of in line with that waiver language, was with respect to the solar piece, in terms of modification of, of setbacks, and again, that's designed to try to move solar improvements farther away from Osgood Street, as part of the process, particularly related to the proposed parcel C.
I think we need a, another page to-
Yeah.
Can we just go to the second one first? Just a, this is more, I guess, construction-wise, so you, you pulled out solar, including solar energy systems as permitted under Chapter 195, Article 8, Part 12. Is there a reason to pull that out, rather than just have that as part of the same last sentence? So, you could just add that same part, such as wind, solar, including solar energy systems as permitted, blah, 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 biomass and title. Is there a reason, I guess, to have it as a separate one, rather than as part of number two?
Well, yeah, a couple things with respect to that. What we had seen is that, I, I think when you amended the solar bylaw last time, there wasn't a clear reference in terms of permitted uses under, under subsection K. And also, with respect to subsection K, it had a, sort of a minimum acreage, and the concern here was, though we, we meet the acreage requirements, there's a concern that it could be read or interpreted to-
Oh, I see.
... provide that that lot should be a minimum contiguous billable upland area of 25 acres.
I see, okay.
And so, that was, that was the concern.
You're trying to avoid the acreage there, that's why.
Right, and you also have a size requirement under the bylaw anyway, for the array.
Okay.
So, that was the reason why we pulled that out separately.
Okay.
I think had we been aware of it, we probably would've struck it as part of implementing the solar energy system bylaw last year.
That, I wanted to try to figure out the reason for it, that makes sense. Okay, and then, yeah, I mean, the modification of setbacks seems to make sense to me as well. The only thing, again, the, I guess I still don't really see the need for the asterisk portion, so it seems like the height requirement, the floor area, and then the solar, the change in terms of where the definition is, and then moving the, allowing for the setbacks, that's all related to this, exactly this project. that's all relates to this, exactly this project. This one I know has to do with moving the, with the other buildings.
Mm-hmm.
I guess I just, I'm not sure that this is necessary and it's somewhat confusing as to its relationship to this project. It just seems to me that we, when we did the solar, we never talked about, I don't think it would have ever occurred to me that it wasn't an accessory use when it's on top of the building.
Yeah, well, I mean, it, it could be considered a principal use. And so.
I guess how? I, I just, I do, does anyone see how solar on top of a building would be a principal use? It seems like.
Oh, it's not the building. No, how could it be?
That's what I'm saying.
Well, it's an independent operating use. It is.
But you're not building a building to put up a.
But, but all we're simply doing is.
I mean, if it were separate on the ground, yeah. But on top of a building, I mean.
Well, I mean, in addition, you have two definitions under the bylaw that, under the sole, under the zoning bylaw that are included when you amended the solar bylaw but were never used within the text of the bylaw itself. And it captures the two types of solar. And so what we wanted to do is, if it's, if it's considered accessory, then we wanted to capture the solar, the systems as they're defined under an accessory use. So therefore, there's no question that it would be considered accessory. And so it's basically tying those definitions that are out there and not used anywhere else in the bylaw back into, into the accessory provisions. So we need, so we feel that we needed the comfort of having it clearly defined as an accessory use.
Gene, do you see any issues with, I mean, it, it seems unnecessary to me and I don't want to confuse the issue. Any?
I don't see any issues with doing it. We had a lot of discussion about this. I, it was initially proposed as adding to permitted uses.
Yeah.
A primary use of rooftop. And I thought that could be unintended consequences by adding it as a primary use. So it was actually my recommendation to handle it this way, if you want to clarify accessory. Even when the Osgood Solar Project was approved, pre the solar energy system bylaw, the permitted solar project was for the ground bonded. The roof at that time was considered accessory. So of the six million, I think three point two, I think three point two was on, three point six was on the floor, on the ground, and two point four was on the rooftop. And those were permitted just through the building department at the time as an accessory use. And I think John's really has a built-in suspender approach here that it, it would define it as if it's on the rooftop, it is accessory, which is how I think you've interpreted it all along.
Yeah.
Just. So that there's no question.
Okay. Yeah, I, I just don't want to, I just don't want people questioning this. Why do we have it? What's this about? What is this relationship? Just seems to confuse the issue. I mean, we can leave it and if, if it becomes an issue, we can always address it. So I just don't think it's necessary, but.
So if we, you know.
We can leave it for now. Yeah, leave it for now. I don't have, you know, I, I mean, I don't think there's a problem sponsoring it. It's just, again, I don't want to, we like everything else. I don't want to lose it for something that might not be necessary. But we can just, okay, cool.
Fair enough.
All right.
Fair enough.
Okay. Anybody else? Questions, comments, thoughts? Any members of the public have anything to say? Seeing none. Nope. Okay.
Will we talk about timing a little?
Yes. What comes next?
So the board has left me to call for a special town meeting on the eighteenth of June. So that literally backs up to me going to the Tribune with a legal notice to call for a public hearing to discuss zoning amendment by law, amendments, I'm sorry, zoning amendments. That goes to Tribune tomorrow. It gets printed in the paper on Monday, the thirteenth and Tuesday, the twenty-first to meet the requirements. And the public hearing would open on May twenty-eighth, which again would be an additional meeting for this board. You don't have a regularly scheduled meeting on May twenty-eighth. So we need to ensure that we'd have a quorum on that day. And then it allows for June fourth as your normally scheduled meeting. And if necessary, June eleventh, we could call another special planning board meeting to get three in prior to the town meeting, if it was warranted.
If it's warranted. I mean, let's see what the outreach looks like. Let's see what the notifications are like. The people on the comments can see what the attendance is like. But are people comfortable with the May twenty-eighth meeting, which is not on our agenda? If you can't, as long as we have a quorum. Because then we can get the twenty-eighth, we can get the fourth, and then the eleventh if necessary.
My thing's Memorial Day, so it's the Tuesday after Memorial Day. So as long as everybody can make it, I think it makes sense to hold it at, to open it at that meeting and it would allow for three if needed.
That's fine.
Mr. Chairman, also, if the, the board has enough comfort, we would ask that the planning board be willing to sponsor these articles?
When is that vote, when should that vote take place? When do you need to know so that you don't need to, I mean, special town meeting's been called. If it wasn't going to be, when would you need to put in signatures?
Well, I think that if, if the board takes a formal vote this evening to, to sponsor it so that at least then, when it's published, they'll have the draft warrant articles in place as, as, as the proposed sponsors, like any other town meeting. Then I think that that's what we'd like to do ideally.
Okay.
I don't have a problem doing that. Because I think we've already done it enough where we don't have any dangerous questions.
Other than who's gonna be there. So with that, big caveat, I think I'm comfortable as well. Other people? Peter, Lori, thoughts?
That's a big caveat.
It is. But I think we can always say the situation happened, that we come to town meeting and it's only kind of told to us a week beforehand. I'd be hard pressed not to withdraw my support and say, that's not how we do business. So.
And what if it is not come to light by the time of town meeting?
Well, so I, I, well, I think if we, I think if we sponsor it, we have the right to withdraw it, don't we?
You have the right to make the motion.
I mean, I think we'll have a bigger problem. I have been to disagree with you guys on that. I don't think we necessarily need to know the name, but I defer to everybody else. If most people believe it's important, then I think we should do it.
I just think, it doesn't matter for the zoning articles. And I don't really see a situation ultimately where it actually matters as to what's there. I just think it's bad business to say.
Well, I do think it's, that's what I think it is. Because most people would react that way. But I think for the purposes of our business, we don't necessarily need to.
I don't think we need it. But for me personally, that they're asking us. Like, because if they put it forward as, as, on their own, as their own article, then yeah.
That's true.
But you're asking us to sponsor something and then not telling us who we're sponsoring it ultimately for. That doesn't sit well with me. So I think for now, everything I've seen, who would, you guys have done a great job. I think everything's presented clearly, answered questions, given us numbers. I mean, it's all on the right track. Just, I think that's the final piece of the puzzle.
We hear yours loud and clear.
What do you think Will knows?
Our next, so our next, the, the public hearing is the twenty-eighth. I get the message loud and clear.
I don't think.
And I'm gonna do everything I can.
Yeah, I don't think it's been lost on you.
To get it cleared. I believe we will make that progress. And I understand how important it is. You know, I'd love for you to take the leap of faith with us. But I understand, I understand where you're coming from. And, and I'm not sure I'd feel a lot differently if I was on the other side of the table here. So we'll, we'll give it our best. And if you wanted to sponsor with that caveat, you know, we understand what, what we got to come up with.
You know, part of the, part of my thinking here is, it's not just. I do agree with your analysis that within the properly defined boundaries of what we do, we may not need to know.
Right.
But I think you're asking us to sponsor this for a broader reason. That you're looking for, really, the sponsorship is really a form of an endorsement, really. We're sponsoring it in a way.
I mean, yeah.
And I think it's stronger for you if it's clear that we know what we're sponsoring, right?
Yeah, because along with John, a town meeting, I mean, you guys, I haven't been to our town meetings. I would assume that you weren't sitting there last year. He's gonna get up and he's gonna talk about it and make a presentation. But one of us, most likely me, is gonna get up and talk about this and say all the good things, hopefully that you've come. And if it's, and yeah, they told us all these things, but then wouldn't tell us who this is ultimately gonna be there? I have a hard time doing that. And I don't know how persuasive I am. I think I do pretty well.
And.
I don't know.
And couldn't someone who questions it at that point stand up and say, you don't even know what you've sponsored. So what does your sponsorship mean as a planning board? Could really undercut it.
And then when you come back for a special permit, great that looks either. So it's just, it's just, you, you get where we're coming from. So, yeah, so why don't we take a vote to, does?
May twenty-eighth is also the date that the warrant, it's the last day the warrant can open and close.
Yes.
Correct? So the, so they'd be submitted to the town manager's office.
Okay.
With your sponsorship for printing in the warrant.
What I, what I will say is, I, I do know that the, the tenant, who the tenant is, and I think this town will be excited to know who that tenant is. And, and I don't disagree with, you're asking us for a leap of faith here. But trust me that this is something that'll be very good for the town and, and it'll be very good for the town's brand. So.
All the more reason, all the more reason. Okay. So all who would at this point recommend favorable action, or, well, what are we doing? Is that?
Well, but you said.
Sponsor.
You said there was a caveat.
Yes.
What's the caveat?
So I think at this point, we're sponsored, we'd vote to sponsor the zoning articles with the caveat that if the name of the end tenant is not provided in a reasonable time period, that we would reserve the right to speak out against it and take action against said articles at town meeting, up and including withdrawing them to the.
So that would be a motion to withdraw it. And that would have to pass a town meeting as well.
Right. I, I mean, it's, it's more withdrawing our sponsorship. I mean, I think.
Yeah.
The town, a, special town meeting's already been called. It's going, I think it should go to town. I think it should go.
If they want, it's not a problem to get the signatures. It'll be on the warrant. But I think actually the power of endorsement, as an endorsement, is greater.
Right. And I think it looks really, really bad if we withdraw that endorsement. So I, I think that's good leverage.
We certainly, you know, we certainly understand. You know, we, we hear.
It's not, it's not, I wouldn't worry so much about the five of us. I mean, I just think it would look terrible to the town not knowing that information going into a special town meeting that you've asked us to call.
Correct.
So, so what do we need to say here? So I think, I mean, we, I think we, anyone not in favor at this point of, of sponsoring with what we just said with the caveat?
So, yeah, I'll make a motion like you said.
Okay. So a motion to sponsor the, a motion to sponsor the proposed zoning articles with the caveat that such sponsorship could be withdrawn if the requisite information is not.
The name.
The name of the tenant is not.
Right.
Provided reasonable time period before a special town meeting.
Correct.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Please, please. Thank you very much.
There you go.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
For our next item of business, I'm gonna make a motion to go into executive session to discuss litigation strategy with our town council on the matter of varsity wireless versus North Andover Planning Board. I've determined that an open session would have a detrimental effect on the board's litigation position. The board will not reconvene an open session after executive session. So after this, we're done. So if you want to, you're all set with the recordings after our motions here. So let's do the motion. Can I get a motion?
We need to make a motion to adjourn after executive.
Do we, do we, Suzanne, do we motion to adjourn now?
Yes.
So.
After executive session, yes.
So get a motion to adjourn. Well, yeah, motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn after executive session has concluded.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Can you get a motion to go into executive session for the reasons stated?
Yes, I judge Simon's vote to go into executive session.
Just get a motion first, I guess.
Motion made to go into executive session.
Thank you, guys.
Second.
John?
I judge Simon's vote to go into executive session.
Aaron Preston vote to go into executive.
Vote to go into executive session.
Peter Boynton vote to go into executive session.
Lori Crane vote to go into executive session.
Okay, we are now set for executive session.
And are we off?